Really.
Hey, it is Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty five. It is five thirty and we're starting our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Uh, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, uh. Juanita Garner here. David Norgard.
Here.
Al Jones isn't here yet, but hey, I understand he's coming and Deb Schwartz.
Here.
Great, now we're going to move on to the acceptance of the agenda, uh, but before we do that, uh, we have a request to move item seven B. To go uh immediately after item five B. So does anyone have any um issue with that or comment or is it okay?
Good.
Do I need a roll?
Uh, just do you want to accept the agenda? Yeah, we'll do a roll call though. Um, so everything will be a roll call tonight since Deborah's online. So Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
So three to zero. Just checking my email, make sure. Oh, do we need? Yeah, yeah, who would like to make the motion on that one?
Oh, uh, I saw Moon.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping us honest.
We'll have to move back.
Don't worry about it.
So moving on to item three, public comment, this is the, this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Library Board of Trustees. On agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter within jurisdiction of the city. Although the Library Board of Trustees values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act. It is, it generally cannot take any action and items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes are assigned to each speaker. Do we have any speakers?
I don't. We don't have any guests online either. Except for, well, Peter Pearson from the Foundation. Do you want to give public comment or you want to wait? Or? You wait, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item uh four. Uh, can we get a uh? A motion to accept the minutes of our April second meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Right, we're on to item.
You gotta do roll call.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that can set agenda for everything. Yeah. Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Three to zero, all accepted.
Okay, great. Okay, now we're going to move on to item uh four B libraries.
So you do all of that um for, for A, B, and C are all good.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So now five.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to five A Friends of the Palm Springs Library.
Um, yes, um, I can give a brief report for the friends. Um, currently they are um. Uh, having a fifty percent off sale for all materials inside the library until the library closes. And then they are also um currently working on a lease for a space to house their uh storage of their books that they sell online and their rare books as well as. Um, being able to have sales while the library is closed in in a temporary location. Um, and so um they will have more to report on that probably by next month. Um, that's all the things I have to report for the friends.
Can I ask a question? So they're gonna be separate from the temporary headquarters that the library is gonna be in? I'll answer that. So um. Excellent question. Uh, they will have a storefront space in our temporary location, the Friends of the Library, but uh because they have uh. Books that they sell online, uh, they wanna have a place to store those and. They also will have a space to receive the donations.
Okay.
And store the donations.
They needed more space than we could get.
Yeah, okay. Yes, good question. Uh, David.
Uh, so just to be perfectly clear. Uh, will the Friends? Be continually or continuously accepting donations even? The transition period or once they get to the new local temporary location?
Yeah, that is my understanding that they're gonna continue to accept donations. Um, they might have an update for us. Um, I believe that there's gonna be some overlap, um, if they are able to. Ca- um, confirm their lease, but there'll be some overlap of when the library is moving out and when we are at the temporary space. So. I think that that's what they're trying to plan for, but um we will let them, uh, we, we will help to publicize that when we know for sure.
Okay. Um, and just one other question. Um. But at the last floor, you mean? Friends board meeting, it was reported that new website would be online as of May second. Um, and was a new thing to look at till the day. Um, do you know if it's up and running?
I do not.
Okay.
I haven't heard. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it. So I, they, they might still be working on a few issues regarding some images and a few other things that they were still trying to get some clearance of, so it could have been delayed.
Hmm.
Yeah.
But that is a good um, a good teaser that the Friends of the Library uh is going to. Uh, they're going to revise their website and have it up, updated and refreshed, refreshed view. Good point.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to move on to um. Item uh five B. And so we're gonna start with the report from the Palm Springs um. Public Library Foundation and then you'll move directly into uh item seven B.
So Peter's gonna do the administrative reports and then I'll uh make the presentation on the proposed. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we have Peter Pearson online.
Hello, good to see you all tonight. Have a few things I wanted to just bring to your attention. On April eleventh, the Foundation hosted a very successful Cocktails on the Page event. We held it at the home of one of our board members, Betsy Smalley, whose home used to be the home of Liberace. Uh, we had a hundred people who were in attendance. It was a great turnout. We had author Ruffey Thorpe. From Los Angeles who was with us for the evening. Uh, the great part about the hundred people that were there. About half of them were very new to us. They weren't in our donor database. So we have fifty new friends. Who paid to come to the event, who we hope to then be able to ask forever to be supporters of the library, which is great. Um, I also want to thank uh Deb and Juanita for attending the event. We appreciated having trustees there. And of course, Jeannie and Julie were there, always showing great support for our uh events that we do. Uh, if you didn't see it, Sunday's Desert Sun had a wonderful article about the event. And uh, we were so thrilled to see that huge coverage of it, but it made a nice profit. We have new friends and we think. All in all, it was just a great event. So thanks for your support on that. Uh, we also just completed our first ever Library Giving Day. We have never done this before. It's somewhat new to library foundations across the country to uh do a solicitation. In conjunction with uh National Library Week, the first of April. And once again, we did a solicitation of our existing donors. And then also we tried to do what we call an acquisition mailing to mail to people that have never given to us before. Uh, the good news is we received donations from one hundred and ten individuals. And of that hundred and ten, forty-five were people who had never given to us before. So we add that to our November, December solicitation. Where we received sixty-five new donors who had never given to us, and we now have over a hundred new donors. Who are very new to the, to the foundation, which is wonderful. Uh, and we hope to keep nurturing those donors and keep them in our fold forever, but having a hundred new donors over the course of just six months is just wonderful. Um, also wanted to let you know that we're gonna uh host our fourth annual Pride on the Page. It's gonna be on November first at the Cultural Center. Uh, Julie has been so helpful to the Foundation as we do this program. She writes the grant to the city to help fund this. Uh, works closely with the planning committee and we're really excited. It's gonna be a little bit different than it was last year. Last year we had. Panels of four or five authors all through the afternoon. This year, we're gonna just have one author every hour on the hour all afternoon. And then we're gonna have an evening ticketed show and we're in the process of finding the speaker for the ticketed show. Looks like we have good. Response from someone that we've been hoping to get. I'm not gonna reveal his name at this point, but uh it should be a great program once again. And uh, we are so appreciative of Julie's help uh in that program. Uh, we received the first payment from the Jane Lickenhoff Endowment. You may remember that Jane Lickenhoff. Uh, left an endowment at the Inland Empire Community Foundation. And she listed four beneficiaries that would get an annual gift out of the endowment in perpetuity. And we received the first installment of that in April from that endowment. We uh, we've worked with Jeannie to look at using the first several. Uh, drawdowns from that to actually be a naming opportunity for Jane L- Lickenhoff in the new renovated building. So that's exciting. Um, lastly, the Foundation has just begun doing uh fundraising for some of the enhancements. For the library, you know, we're interested in enhancing some of the spaces that uh Jeannie has brought to our attention. That need uh enhancements over and above the city funding. And we've already gotten commitments for several hundred thousand dollars for uh individuals who are interested in supporting that. Those individuals uh wish to remain anonymous at this time, but uh just wanting you to know that we've begun the work on that and we're really excited. How uh we've received some early success. So any questions that you have about that? I'm happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions? I just have a comment. I am just so thrilled. You guys are doing an amazing, amazing job. I mean, a hundred new people coming to donate to the library. I mean, that's incredible. That is such a short period of time and I just, I'm just so excited. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We're, we're excited too.
Okay. All right, we're going to. We're gonna go ahead and move on to library staff report.
Oh, we're gonna, so we're gonna.
Yeah, that's right. I'm so sorry. Yes, we moved item seven B.
I'm very, very gracious to uh.
That's right.
Thank, thank you, Anita. You've been very gracious to move. Your schedule around a little bit uh for me today. Um. So I wanna talk about the uh proposal that we put together uh in the packet and. Um, before I get into some of the details on that, I think it's appropriate to. Just when I was thinking about how we put this proposal together and I solicited some input and I got some input on this. The, the trustees have been so supportive of the Foundation and the formation. Uh, and we're, the Foundation's on the verge of uh really going out. Uh, in earnest to uh solicit donations for the renovation. But if you go back in history. Um, some of you know that uh the Foundation had been given a um, a kind of a seed grant. And the uh Foundation started uh paying that back and we were. Little over halfway done with that and the trustee said, well, that's okay. We forgive that. Why don't you use the money? For something and part of what we use the money for was to hire uh Mr. Pearson and help us with. Development of a strategy and a direction. And part of that strategy and a direction was to create an awareness campaign so that we could be front, more front and center with. The community. Uh, and you supported that for us and we executed on that and I think more people know us as a result. And then one of the other linchpins of this strategy was to. Uh, put more members on the board and get them working on our behalf and. Uh, we did that and created some committees and then it became clear to us that we really needed an executive director. So we came to the trustees at that. Turning point and you guys supported us once again. So I think we're kind of at um one of those stages now. Uh, I think. You know, but please know that um, none of this goes unnoticed by our board members and we all know that. Uh, we're working together uh with you and with, with Jeannie and her team and um. It's been very rewarding so far and I, I, we think we're on the verge of some, uh, something really good in our fifth new, next fiscal year, which starts July first. So uh, having said that, what are the three things uh that the Foundation is concerned about now? Um, from my perspective, the first is. We, we need a, uh, we have a technical infrastructure. Uh, we have a website, we have a donor database, we have a way of collecting donations on our websites. Um, we process those donations and we send out thank you letters and, and text form letters and so on, but we. I, I was not uh comfortable with the fact that those systems were all integrated and. There was no, not as much synthesis around that. And going into a more uh forward-looking uh call to action to the community. Um. We really needed to, to um. Solidify that and we were fortunate to have a gentleman by the name of Jim Gray. Who uh came onto the board recently um from Google. And uh Jim uh is very expert on many of these systems and. We now have five or six, seven people volunteered from the board. To form what we call the working group and their, their job is to make sure that we're. Integrating all of our technologies in the right way at a cost-efficient manner with backups and, and the ability to. Uh, channel and process uh multiple donations. For ten dollars all the way up to hopefully ten thousand dollars and, and beyond. So um, that's what we're doing. The, the second thing I think is um. What the, what the proposal is all about and that is, you know, moving out, how are we going to um effectively address? Uh, the community. In, in such a way that we're, we're very effective in soliciting donations when we go out, out with a public. Um, approach. And so we would like to be able to have. Um. A five or six month uh. Runway to, so to speak, to, to do our uh strategic development. To uh hire um a qualified. Uh, consultant and or PR firm. Uh, and then put uh funds that we have in our reserve account together with. Some of the funds that are included in this proposal and um, and really do a great job in, in um. Let's say the late fall, uh, early winter next year and go, go public. And as Peter said. We are getting terrific um indications from the discussions we, we, we already had with people in the community. Um, that we're gonna be successful. Uh, and then. Well, how do you do the rest of it? Do you, how do you segment them? I'll get into a little bit more on that. And then the third thing is. You know, looking down the road two or three years, we need to make sure um a- as our mission is to provide long-term. Uh, financial support to the library, the Foundation needs to be viable for the long term. So we have to figure out a way to be self-sufficient. Um, with our um fundraising and, and so on. And I, I, I think we need to go to the next level. In terms of our events and, and so on, so we can continue to generate um sufficient funds. That's for another day. Um, and, and I just wanted to, to put that out there uh with you uh to, just to let you know, those are the three big things that are on my mind. As we go. So let's, let's turn our attention, if you don't mind, to the um, to the proposal and. This again is a part and parcel of. More of an action-oriented um plan. That asks uh potential donors uh to have, you know, to have a call of action. And, and to be prepared to um accept those donations. So there's really three components of it. The first one is um email acquisition and as Peter mentioned. This has been a key linchpin um of our uh steering committee. And. We've added a lot of emails from our annual drive, a lot of emails uh from uh one, the one P S picnic. A lot of emails from um the, the cocktails on the page and our library giving day. So. We actually have a good problem where we have to pay a little bit more to our database. Because we went to the next tier on uh people who, that are, that are in there that we can address. So that's a good problem for us to have. Um, so that, that's part of it and what that entails is. You go to um some of the. More prominent media. Palm Springs Life and some of the radio stations and TV stations and you, and you ask them, would you send an email? On our behalf to your subscribers or to your email database? And in that, in that, um, then we craft the email and we say. We'd love to uh interact with you. If you want to do that, please let us know at such and such a location and. So we've, we've done pretty well with that. We're still, we'll, we're still moving forward with that. Uh, but we think we get a pretty high quality. Person on the other end of that email and now we have more people to address. Second, second piece of this is, is a website. That would. Act as our um capital campaign website. So it's a specialized website developed by a specialized company. And it's gonna have the renderings. Um, that, that Julie and, and the architects can give us. It's gonna, it's gonna represent. Very well, I think, our naming opportunities and we're gonna be able to drive everybody to that website. So we know. Whatever money comes in on that website. Is gonna be geared towards the capital campaign. Because if you go to our website, although we'll have a button. To go to Capital Campaign or to the Foundation, it's a little bit more complicated. They have to make a decision. So we wanna drive everybody. Uh, to that website so we can make sure that we know where they want their money to go and we can honor that. And then this working, this working group that I mentioned earlier is figuring out a way to uh capture. Uh, how people, uh, who, who, or who those people are, when did the donation come in? Uh, how they, how they want us to use that uh, uh, money and so on. So um, that's a real key part of this. Um, it's gonna allow us to do um some interesting things uh to point people to that uh website as opposed to. Um, our, our website uh itself. And then the, the third component um has the most money associated with it, but it's probably the least complicated and. It's really a, a media plan. Where we're gonna put, we're gonna pony up uh our fifty thousand dollars and add it to hopefully the fifty thousand that you're agreeable to. And then we have a, we have a, an ability to hire a consultant, build a good media plan. And then buy uh the right type of media over the, over the winter and, and do it for about a four-month period of time. Uh, and it'll have a call to action. Finally, yay. Um, we have uh. July uh ninth. Uh, uh, Jeannie's got the, the, all of the contractors can be awarded and uh between now and then the city. Is gonna uh tell us how they're gonna uh run the financing for the municipal bond and so on. So we'll have a lot of ammunition. Uh, to go out to the community. And then when you think about it, okay, so. How do you, how do you do that? You know, we have a business community. And we have parents of school-aged children and we have the one P S Neighborhood Association. We have all the sort of these sub, subsegments of. Our residents and visitors. Um, and so. Maybe we should tailor some messaging to each one of those. Subsections and uh we can be more effective that way. So we wanna plan it, we wanna have some help. And then once we decide where we wanna go, we wanna have the funds to execute on that. So that's really what the. Proposal is, is pretty much all about. Um, it's, it's a seventy thousand dollar ask. Um, it's ten thousand for the email, it's ten thousand for the website build out or the, the specialized website build out. And that's another fifty for uh the advertising and marketing campaign. So thank you again for your consideration and I, and I, once again, it's great to work with you.
Does anyone have any questions? David, are you thinking of a question?
Uh, I, I think you answered everything I had in mind to ask, so I, I think I'm good. Oh, sorry. I'm good.
Great, okay. Um, I just have a really quick question. So the consultant, the PR consultant, do you have someone in mind or is it something you're going to start looking for?
We do have a couple of candidates in mind.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay.
And the other thing I should mention on that is um, we're re-casting our communications committee so that they're geared to. Um, be the, 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 sort of the impetus and the energy behind this. So we'll have this. We have some new members on the board who are, who are very good at um the website technology, social media, branding. Uh, and so on. And so we're forming another team in that committee to work with whomever. So that committee will probably. Make a recommendation to the rest of the board in terms of what type of person they want and who they want. And we've al- already have um two. Uh, folks in mind for that and probably get a third.
Great. Well, it sounds like you're doing everything, getting all your homework done and lighting everything up. Wonderful.
Just to, oh, David, you wanna, I was gonna just say, just to educate myself, do you, do we usually do this all at once or do you allocate the money when you need it? Or how does it work? Is it, we just give you seventy thousand and you spend it as you wish or do you spend it in phases or how does that work?
Uh, that's up to you. I mean, what we usually do with it, Deb, is um if you do give it, does the funding right now, we put it into. A CD or a money market until we need to spend it. So we're able to generate a little bit more. Um, you were generous enough to give us two years towards um uh Peter's uh part-time compensation and we, we parked uh. Uh, the second year in, in a CD. So we're generating a little bit more in that. Um. So, but however, you know, we'll take it whenever you, as long as you commit to it, we'll, it'll be fine with us.
All right, got it. Thank you.
Then I have one little question. Uh, I'm just curious about the donor database you are currently using and if you intend to keep it. As this working group continues its work or if you intend to change it?
Uh, no, we're gonna keep it. Um, I think it was under, underutilized. And um, these new folks that are re-energizing our uh technology prowess. Have told us that. And part of that too, David, is making sure that you build a relationship with that service provider, right? So. You know all of the capabilities that they're offering. And I think there's some cost savings that have come up and, and so on. Um, but no, we, we actually would like to. Manipulate and, and, and take advantage of, of the database and, and have some in-house expertise. That, that would help us exploit it um to its ma- maximum effectiveness. And. What we've said to that working group is when you get to the point where you feel um you have recommendations for us, but we need staff. Let us know because we're, we're open to, to doing that because um that's, I mean, we need, we need all of that uh help. We can't do it without that kind of a resource.
Right, yeah. So, so what do you use now?
It, it's a system called Bloomerang and the company is out of Indianapolis, Indiana.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Jeannie, I just wanted to um let you know on uh in your library trust funds uh budget uh that you have on page fifteen. Uh, the Library Foundation does have an available budget right now of three hundred and fifty, no, of two hundred and two thousand dollars. So. This wouldn't um be any, this wouldn't be any burger to you all. It would just come out of that available budget. If that's, I believe that's how we were working this.
Yes.
This is just a drawdown on your already approved. Half a million dollars.
And there's that, there's in that. Two hundred and two, there's a, the third year for the executive director compensation. Which you wanted to hold back, which is to Deb's point, you wanted just to hold, hold back on that.
Okay, great. Um, I don't know if someone has any comments um about this or you wanna have some discussion about it? Uh, before we call it to a vote. I just wanna share something personal um about this uh. Maybe fifteen years ago, uh, the church that I was attending was trying to build a building. They were renting space and. We did everything, we had every kind of fundraiser we could think of and we still made just tiny, tiny increments in our, in our uh bank account and, and just could not. Build that building. Uh, when we hired professionals to come in and help us, which was a big chunk of money and everyone was so upset about it. Um, but we did it. We decided, we voted on it and we put that money out there. When those professionals came in, I mean, they know what they're doing and it was amazing what happened. Within, you know, a year and a half, we were. Building our church building. So, you know, from personal experience, I know that you have to spend money. Um, and you have to hire the right people um in order to, to make things happen. So uh, I don't have any. Problem with um giving you the seventy thousand, um, and having you, you know, use it however you need it, as you need it, but I'd like to have your thoughts if you guys have any other thoughts on this.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I, I, I agree enthusiastically.
Wonderful. Okay, so um should we call this to a vote?
I, I move that the uh proposal be accepted as presented.
Second. As you think.
Roll call.
Yes, I have to do roll call because Deborah's online. So Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Passes you now.
Passes you now, yes.
You guys are wonderful. Thank you so much. You guys are wonderful. And we're, we're trying our best to live up to the faith. That you've put into us and, um, we just, we love working with Jeannie and, and her team. Um, and, and with you guys, it's just, it's, it's terrific. And, and as I said before, Peter and I were talking. Fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, there's gonna be some, some things happening with, that we're all gonna be happy about. And that's, that's what we're. We're aiming for. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so now we'll move on to item five C, libraries. Yes, thank you. Um, and I will also discuss on seventy about the library innovation. So. Uh, we are still at the main library. Um, come see us. We're, we're gonna be there for, uh, the summer. Uh, not all the summer, but we're there, so come see us. Um, one of the, uh, things that, uh, we are participating in. Not specifically library related, but, uh, a nice community event is called, uh, Do the Right Thing. So I don't know if you've ever heard of this, uh, this reward program for students. Uh, they're nominated by their teachers, by their friends or family. Um, and then each month there are a handful of students that receive recognition, uh. Or, and receive a Do the Right Thing award. Well, Palm Springs Public Library is one of many sponsors. That works on this initiative. And one of the things that we do is we offer the, the student recipient. A certificate for a free book from the library, because we want to always help children develop their home libraries. And so they get books of their own. And so, uh, they will get a certificate that they can bring to the library that. Brings them to the library. They can come see the library, get a library card if they don't have one. And, uh, and then get, pick out a free book. And we have a s- a stash of, of brand new paperback books that they can choose from. So it's not like they go to the shelf and take one of ours and see photos. No, they get a new book all their own. Uh, and the next award ceremony will be at the Desert Learning Academy on Wednesday, May twenty-first at four P M. This is a special ceremony too, as, uh, they are going to give away scholarships to several students. So it's just gonna be a nice ceremony. We're gonna go and. Uh, we always love to support this program and, and it's always great to cheer on the students and, and hear why they've. Why they are receiving their recognition. Um, let's see. Beanie, meany, my, okay, we've got some, so that's good news. Uh, we have some items, some digital resources in jeopardy. You know, last month I said, everything's great. No, I did not. I said, we don't know. But we still are not completely certain about all of the things that are going on. But with the, um, with the, the current, uh. Financial situation in the, in the federal government, they had, they had ordered to end, end operations of the Institutes for Museum and Library Services. Uh, right now there is currently a temporary restraining order about this order, so it's kind of up in, uh, flux at this moment. Uh, but California receives fifteen million dollars of funding from the federal government to operate the state library. Which they then trickle down to us as far as, um, group purchases of databases, funding for, um, for other supports. Student scholarships, um, some things like that. So. One of the items in jeopardy is the New York Times Online. And I know the New York Times Online is one of our most popular resources that we have to offer. And the California State Library pays for that for us. So, uh, we are currently exploring costs if we have to buy it directly. Right now, um, for us, it's, um, it's nominal. It's roughly a thousand dollars a year for us, I believe, to keep it, keep it going. Uh, we do believe that this is a really great resource. Um, we'll, we'll have to see if we have to pay for it ourselves. Um, but what happens with these trickle-down economics-type things, if they don't pay for it, then what do we have to not pay for to pay for it? So, um, it, it's, yeah, it's just one of those things. We're, we're, we're waiting to hear if we have to pay for it and how we would handle that. Uh, another item that is, um, I think even, um, more dire situation is the California Digital Newspaper Collection. This is where our archive of the Desert Sun lives. And so the California Digital Newspaper Collection is based at, in UC Riverside. It is a program that does, um, digital arch, that archives, scans and archives. Uh, historic newspapers throughout the state. They have over five hundred newspapers that they've archived. One of them being our Desert Sun. We have, um, nineteen thirty-four to nineteen eighty-nine. Online, fully keyword searchable. It's a wonderful resource. We ourselves at the library spent. Um, what amount did I say? Oh, I didn't write it down. But, um, I know we spent almost three hundred thousand dollars. In funds in, through, um, grant funds and through in-kind costs and from the trustees. They bought, they bought our scanner. But we, um, we spent almost three hundred thousand dollars to get our archive up and running. And a lot of that money went to digitize the Desert Sun. So I'm, I'm telling you this because this, this resource is in jeopardy, because, um. We thought that it was jeopardy, in jeopardy next year, but we found out that, um, the funding that they were supposed to get this year did not come. At all. They didn't get their, their four hundred thousand dollar line item from the state library that they were supposed to. Then they. Find, just found out that it's not coming. So they're, they're in a real scramble right now. They, they're trying to raise money. To keep going. So our, we're very worried about this. Um, the Desert Sun, uh, archive is a wonderful resource. Uh, we do have microfilm of this, um, archive, but being able to do a keyword search. In an archival database is so much better, because otherwise you just don't even know where to look. You'd have to read every newspaper to find. What you're looking for, uh, through, I don't know, if you've used a microfilm machine. Uh, motion sickness happens and you're scrolling through the, the little microfilm. But, um. It's, if you want more information about this, people watching at home or wherever, if you want more information about this, reach out to me. At the library, because I can tell you more information about this, um, valuable resource. And, uh, right now they have. Um, fifty-three million newspaper articles that, um, if they don't get the funding by the end of the year. It's possible that it will just turn off. And it's not like that it's going to be deleted. But the online database that supports it will just have to be turned off. And, and so we do have our archive. We have our, we have our hard drives of it, but then we would have to pay for that. So then what else do we have to cut? So there, there's again this, this issue. Um, that's lovely news, isn't it? Let's see, coming up in June, just so you all know, uh, the joint boards and commissions and city council meeting will happen June seventeenth. Um, trustees, R S V P, if you will be attending, uh, the deadline to R S V P is June eighth. Um, there will be an appreciation dinner for, for the, um, boards and commissions. And then, uh, the public meeting will be at six P M. And this will be at the convention center. This is how we've done, we did this last year, Juanita gave the presentation last year. So at our June meeting, we're going to work on the slides together. Uh, they're pretty simple. We just list our accomplishments and our goals for the future. We might just be able to repeat last year's almost. Because guess what? Our goals are the same, I think. And then, um, I will talk to you about the library renovation when it's time for that. And then Julie. Um, when I talked about summer reading.
Yeah, so, um, a few things. Um, so we do have, uh, book clubs continuing. Um, we do have a, a couple of book clubs that do meet even in. June, um, and then most will suspend for the summer and then, um, restart in the fall. So, um, we have five different book clubs that meet, um. And so we have evenings, um, we, because it means the evening and the afternoon. So lots of different options for people. If you're looking to connect with. Uh, different people and, um, book clubs are a great way to do that. So I encourage you to go online and see what we're, all the book clubs are reading and just. Um, come out. Also, um, our poetry club that we started at the Wellwood, um, has a new leader. Unfortunately, um, our initial leader, um, was called, uh, back to his job out of town, um, and so. But we have a new leader. Her name is Donna Fitzgerald. She's a poet, published poet, and she has agreed to lead the group. And actually, the group at the last meeting had asked if they could extend and continue to meet through the summer. So I'm working on that. To see if we can make that happen, because they're very dedicated and excited about the poetry club. So I wanna try to make that happen. So we will see. Um, also, uh, I wanted to share that the L G B T Q History and Archives is going to have an exhibit. At the Wellwood in the display cases for June Pride Month. So it'll be up all month, uh, June first through the thirtieth. And then, as Jeannie said, uh, we're gonna be starting summer reading soon. So we start on, uh, Monday, June ninth, and we continue through July eighteenth. It's six weeks of, uh, fabulous fun. This year's theme is Level Up. So it's a lot, a lot about gaming, but it's also about kind of having. To level up your experiences or your ways to level up your life, if you will. And so we're gonna have a lot of different things. We're also doing some cross, um. Programs. So the teens and adults are gonna do some joint programs this year. We're gonna get, um, well, we'll be out of the library a little bit, but, um, we are gonna. Uh, do things at the, uh, play lounge and cafe. We're also gonna do something at the, uh, Palm Springs Escape Room. Um, and so we have a lot of different things this year, um, to offer everyone. So I encourage everyone to sign up and register. We have programs for all ages, adults as well as kids and teens. And so lots of stuff going on every week. We're gonna have great grand prizes. I. I'm excited to say that our chief, uh, Chief Mills is, uh, gonna be part of a grand prize. That's just a little teaser. I can't really say yet, but. Um, and there'll be lots of fun things that you could try to win. Um, and then, um, we are gonna do a little bit different. We're gonna do our finale this year. On Saturday, July nineteenth. And right now, that's also gonna be our, uh, tentative closing party. So we're gonna combine the summer reading finale and the closing party for the renovation. Um, and it's gonna be a fun community, um, afternoon. Um, and we're gonna have lots of fun, fun things going on. And so, um, I encourage you all to attend. It'll be, um, again, Saturday, July nineteenth. Um, one o'clock, we're gonna start with the summer reading grand prizes and then transition into the closing party. And so, um, there'll be more to come about that very soon. Um, and, uh, I think that's everything I have. Um, we'll be getting all of the summer reading events up on our calendar. We're working on that now. So they'll be all there. But we do just have the brochures. Um, the flyers out in the library and we gave one to you.
Great, and we'll get one to help.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item six, uh, treasures report.
And I'm embarrassed to say that my computer crashed. Oh, my computer crashed, so I can't, hold on. I, that's what I was trying to do when I came in. Uh, I have been using it for the last four hours.
Do you wanna pack it?
Pardon me?
Do you need a board packet?
From the, do you have one for the last? I have a board packet tonight.
Yes, I have the last one too.
Just the last one, that's, I had all the comparison and everything is done.
Yeah.
I'm these other, thank you. Jeannie, you're doing.
That's just the Janey.
And Jelisa.
So it's on page one of the budget. And again, not much movement, not much change at all. Um, there was a slight, uh, increase actually. Um, and I was trying, I don't, trying to recall, it was thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, it's exact, I did the math on it. It's exactly the.
That's it, it's just that, okay. Other than that, uh, we're at one point six one five, eight one nine, we were at one point five eight two, six nine two. Not much change.
Can I have a motion to accept the, uh, treasure report?
So moved.
Have a roll call, please.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yeah, yes.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, and we're going to move on to item seven. And, uh, Jeannie, you're gonna do that. Hold on. Oh, seven eight, yes, yes. Okay, so. And on page seventeen, uh, you will see a copy of a thank you letter. We were fortunate enough to be included. The library board of trustees was fortunate enough to be included. In the estate of Frederick Van Poof, who, um, left you a wonderful gift of thirty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. It's actually a percentage of the estate, so that, that's what it equals. And, um, since it is, uh, a gift to you. You actually have to formally receive it. And we, we wanna, uh, thank them, thank the estate and, um, acknowledge them. And, um, once, once you approve it, I assume you will approve this gift. Uh, we will also take it to city council to recognize the gift there as well. Since it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, it's a really wonderful gift. Wonderful. So can I have a motion to?
Yes, I make the motion that we thank, first of all, the estate for including us. And secondly, uh, to accept the gift of a thirty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars. And seventy-eight cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, can we have roll call, please? Uh, yes. Um, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Oh, I've heard. Thank you. And that's a one, like I said, a wonderful gift, uh, estate planning. Are, are the gifts we, we don't want to, we don't like it when they trigger, but we appreciate the gifts, obviously. Absolutely. So I'm gonna move on to item, um, seven C, because we've already moved B, uh, to earlier. Um, let's see. Yes. Obviously, I, I've missed a line on my notes and I wanted to make sure I ruined had the notes correct. So, um, item seven C is, um. I'm sorry. Do it this way. Okay, so, um. The, uh, title of the item is endorsement of facility use agreement between the city of Palm Springs and the Palm Springs Plaza Theater Foundation. For after-hours use of the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library and Courtyard. So, um, as of. This item is technically between the city of Palm Springs, the city council and the, um, Palm Springs Plaza Theater. Foundation. However, we wanted to bring it to you, um, as a courtesy to make sure that you are aware of the situation. And also to, uh, receive your endorsement if you so endorse. Um, so I'll explain it a little bit. Um, the Plaza Theater Foundation is looking for space to utilize. Uh, before, during and after their events, uh, to have a V I P reception area. I'm trying to think, parties, fundraisers.
Um, yeah, and, um, areas for, um, staff, um, performers, so green room situations. Um, lots of different uses that they were thinking of, so.
Right. And so the, um, the, the caveat is that they will use it after hours when the library is closed. So that's part of the agreement. It's not that they are taking over the library while we're open in, in place of library services. It is, um, it is a use agreement that we are doing with them that would take place, uh, after the library closes, like I said. Um, and I'm trying to think what else I wanted to say about the.
Are they, may I just?
Yes, please ask questions.
Are they?
I know, they need a switch.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I'm just curious, are they going to reimburse us for any costs or expenses for using?
Thank you. So in this agreement, we have, uh, mutually beneficial considerations. So, um, in, in consider, in you, in exchange for use of this, the library will get use of the Plaza Theater. Which, uh, up to eight times per year.
Oh, ooh.
Uh, that's great.
But six of those times being during our high season, um, so that we can use it for Palm Springs speaks, maybe foundation and large event. Um, just various, yeah, so we've, we've come to some agreements in here. Um, all of the, um. All of the improvements are temporary, you know, like they will bring in their equipment. And then they can't store it there overnight, it will leave. So it's, it's strictly a use of the place and then it goes away. So it's not that they are taking over, uh, the, the fat yet. Yes, they are gonna do, they can do, my, my stage whisper. They are going to, uh, do, uh, janitorial to make sure that the, the space is put back, uh, as good as or better. Uh, than, than it was before. The agreement, the term of the agreement is five years. Um, we both have, uh, mutually. Uh, mutual, if, if there are problems or issues, we have a right to cure. Um, the, the agreement's, um, quite extensive. Uh, it's taken us many months to come to this, to these terms. So, um, I am happy to answer your question. Julie, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, the other thing is, um, which I think is a great benefit, is that not only do, are they allowing us to use the Plaza Theater spaces eight times a year. But they're also going to cross-promote those events. So, um, people would go and, and learn about the Plaza Theater events. Would also figure about our events, which I think is a, a very big benefit. Wow. So that would be fabulous as well.
So no money's changing hands, it's just reciprocal use. Is that right?
There, uh, I believe there's a dollar.
There's a dollar.
There's a lease.
And then we might have some.
But there's a lease.
Yes, and then we. Yes, and then we do have, um, yeah, we would have some hard costs. We've gotten some uh, some waivers of, of some expenses. Um, when we use the Plaza, we would have to pay for staffing, stagehands or, or our technical assistants there. Um.
But they, they, they given us a, a credit towards that.
You did get a small credit that we could use um towards those, those fees. But then um, the rental itself is a, is a. A big price discount to, to get at no cost to us is, is a really uh amazing discount.
So I, I have a question. When uh the Plaza is using that space, um. Does there have to be someone from the library who's going to be um notified when that is going to be used? And will they need to be there?
No, they won't need to be there. We, we're gonna work all that out, but uh, we will know well in advance. Um, we're gonna work on the calendar. Um, it'll all be coordinated. I keep looking at Julie. Julie's our um public relations at our events coordinator. So she coordinates and oversees the, the supervision of the Wellwood. So um, this would be all coordinated with us. It wouldn't, wouldn't be any surprises. We would, we would work that out. Um, and it will still remain our library. It will still be a library. It will still be our library space. Um, yeah.
Yeah, it's just activating it after hours. And they do have um to give us um, uh, many months' notice of the calendar. We have to agree on those dates. Making sure that we don't have anything conflicting. But again, it's all after hours. So it's not going to impede on what we're doing at the library. Um, in terms of any programming or services that we do.
I, I think you said this, I just wanna make sure I understood correctly. Um, so the reciprocal arrangement. Is that we would receive um. Time in the theater up to eight times. Did you say six of which would be in season?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Yes, and it is detailed in here um, in the agreement, I believe.
Okay.
I, I mean, I know it is. I was just looking to see where it was. Oh, it's uh, it's. On your packet is page twenty-four, but it's page three of their agreement. It's three point one point one nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it, it between October first and April thirty was.
Six of those events would take place during the timeframe.
Um, yeah. Good. So you're looking for us, from us an endorsement? Or, or we don't make city council takes action?
The city council will take action on this, but we wanted to bring it to you as a courtesy so that, because as library.
Is, is the endorsement then a, a motion or is it?
Yes, you would need, you would uh make a motion.
Yeah, I make the motion. It's really to our advantage.
May roll call, please. Okay, uh, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And then we will probably take this to City Council on May, the second meeting in May. Which is May twenty-eighth. So this will go before City Council at that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go and move to um. Item uh seven D.
Great. That's me too.
That's you again. Oh my gosh.
Okay. Oh, I did, I should point out in your packet for um seven C that there is a map. A two-page map showing areas that were marked off limits for, for the um Plaza Theater. They um, they don't have access to the historical societies area and they don't have access to the basement. Just. If anybody's wondering what these maps are. Um, so item seventy, just give you some updates about the library renovation. Um, on page, the very last page of the packet, we have a uh tentative project timeline. Uh, we also loaded this on our uh Engage Palm Springs website. So you can go, go to, if you go to Engage Palm Springs, you can see our library renovation project page. And where we, we duly uploads our uh, our monthly updates. I uh, I include a monthly update in our month, in our library newsletter. And we upload that to the. Uh, Engage Palm Springs. Uh, we've also uh uploaded this timeline. And um, now that we have more firm information. We felt comfortable, asterisk, comfortable posting a timeline. Obviously, things may happen. We don't want to, uh, we don't want people to completely say, well, you said. You were going to open at this time. We want to be clear that this could change. But we have some really good dates now in the next few months that we are optimistic about. So we um, the projects, the project is currently out to bid. So you um. If you navigate to the city's website, and then you go to under departments, and you go to procurement and contracting, and then you look for open bids. And then you go end up in planet bids. Uh, you can read the bid. You can see all about it. Uh, if you can't find it, give me a call. Navigate to that. Oh, Google it? Use that thing called Google. That's good. Um, so we're out to bid uh for a contractor as well as a construction management and special inspection services. The bids close at noon on May twenty-ninth. Um, for the temporary location, we are still at the main library. So please come see us. Um, we are going to do our summer reading at the main library. Again, this should be fun. Last hurrah for a little bit. And uh. Again, super excited about this project. We'll be there, I expect we'll be there till around July nineteenth, as you can see on the timeline.
Hmm, seventy-three days.
Seventy-three days. Did you put the countdown? We put a countdown on the L E D sign at, at, at the curb, so you can drive by and see how many days it is until we, till we close. So we got a closing countdown. I think that's funny. Um, and we are in the good, we're still negotiating for a temporary library. But um, things are moving ahead. So I am optimistic. And I have more to report on that at a future date. And we'll keep you all posted. Are there any questions about this?
Let's review the bids.
That would be up to the engineering department, I believe. Um, typically, when things come in for bids. They, they pick um a handful of subject matter experts, maybe five people. Now, I can't say for sure that's how this is gonna go. But typically, when we have, when we get bids through the city. I, I've sat on several janitorial, security um services, and they pick people from different areas. They review them, they score them, add up the scores, come up with a response. And um. But I can't say for sure that's how this will happen, but that's typically how the city happens. City does. It's very, very um transparent.
And, and will our architects be involved in any way in that process?
Our, I, I don't think so, but our architects are involved in a pre-bid meeting. I saw their names on, on that list. They will probably be one of the people talking about the, the plans and the project and, and what. And answer any questions that um prospective bidders have, so. Yeah, it's happening. It's really.
Okay, and um, item eight, we're gonna be committee reports.
Nope, okay. All right, um, I do have future agenda.
What are some future agenda items?
So like I said, next month, we're going to have our uh work on the slides for the Joint Boards and Commissions meeting. So uh, we'll. I'll send those to you in advance. Um, but we did it last year. It's listing our accomplishments for the year. Uh, and our goals for next year. And then uh, we will be bringing to you our collection development policy. Uh, it's an, it's a requirement that we have to um include language that the state asks for. It's a California Freedom to Read Act. And so we're, we're might, we have a collection development policy right now that's really great. But we're gonna modify it to include the language so that we conform with the state. And uh, my goal is to bring that to the June meeting. And uh, we will probably at that time, also my goal is to invite, to review all of our policies and just give them a big refresh. Make sure our language is easy to read, like simplify everything. And that's it, I think.
Any business?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being here. This adjourns um our meeting for tonight.
Six twenty-nine.
Well done.
I, I hope the record will show that I was here.
We, we, yes, of course.